Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Council meeting for Monday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you for tuning in tonight. We are now called to order. The next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. And so with that, I'll call for a motion to approve.
I say move.
Was that Councilmember Dixon?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
Aye? Any nays? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved and we'll proceed on to the approval of meeting minutes. First, beginning with the Town Council Work Session Meeting Minutes for Monday, February the tenth. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
I say move.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
I'll second. I'll go with the Councilmember Blood. So the motion has been formally put on the table and seconded. Are there any corrections to the meeting minutes for February tenth? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye. Any nays? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Next, we'll go to the work session minutes for the last budget work session, which was February eighteenth. Is there a motion to approve?
I say move.
Moved by Councilmember Dixon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Councilmember McBride? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Were there any corrections to the agenda or any edits? All right. Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. So that completes the approval of minutes for tonight. Next, we'll move down the agenda into new business, beginning with the Legislative Session Update. And Town Administrator, unless you have any opening remarks, I'll just turn it right over to Mr. Brown because this usually goes a little long and I want to make sure we give him his full fifteen minutes. So we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Brown. Thanks for joining.
Thanks for having me. I think this is a very great time to have this discussion. Things have been kind of slower in Annapolis these days as we edge closer toward crossover. So that's a very exciting time as well to see what will and won't cross over. So it's a good opportunity to talk about that, this, what's going on in the state. One thing I'll start off with is kind of before we get into kind of some bills is the overall budget challenge the state has. So the governor has placed forth his budget. And basically, what he wants to do is kind of grow, what he's been talking about, grow the Maryland economy. And he wants to grow the Maryland economy through a series of tax cuts and also through a series of job improvement and getting more organized around economic development. That has been met, I would say, with some apprehension. I think the kind of general feel from the state legislator is that not a great time to be reducing revenue. So the bill is still floating around. I don't know. It will probably get marked up a little bit in terms of his budget bill and allocation. But from the state level, we are approaching a $200 million shortfall. So something has to be done about that. So that's a tough decision that is still being dealt with in Annapolis and we'll, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep our eyes on how that looks and impacts Blatonsburg as we go through that. One of the things I'll talk about, which was kind of identified a bill of concern for us, but for Blatonsburg in terms of economic development and the future of Blatonsburg, and that is fairness and zoning, HB one twelve sixty-six, and that was by Delegate Austin. The good thing about that bill, if there's anything good thing about it, it's been referred to committee. It's actually been via the Prince George County Delegation, has kind of almost been taken out and referred to committee and more so put into a more of a work study or watch group to kind of digest that. And what fairness and zoning was, it did a couple of things. And one of the things that it would do is expand who can challenge zoning decisions. That's the biggest deal. So I live in Accra Creek and I can come up and say, I'm not happy with Blatonsburg's zoning, which is, which is not great. So that's the overall big rock in it that is kind of would, could impact the community. Our developers don't need more challenges to bring economic development to the community. So doesn't let that's going anywhere, but we're definitely keeping eyes on it as it does have potential. So some bills I want to cover, they're very big and broad, so feel free to ask her any questions. But I'm covering them because it, it could have municipal impact for, for Blatonsburg. HB five oh three, which is the Housing for Jobs Act, that was requested by the governor. Basically, what the governor is saying is that, hey, once again, in line with his budget, we need to make sure that we have regional housing infrastructure that keeps place with job growth, right? And basically, what he's done is, is that he said, hey, municipalities, I'm going to divide you up into six districts. No doubt that we are in the Washington DC Metropolitan District. And basically, what I'm going to require you to do is ensure that you have practices that ensure affordable housing is within your area and that your people live close to jobs. And he actually, for the first time in a long time, if Tony was here, he would probably talk about this. We've got a definition for affordable housing. And what the definition is, sixty percent of area median income for the last forty years, right? So what are those, what are that, what are that range been for the last forty years? And basically, he's going to come back at some point and say, what have you done to encourage this? Do you have practices and policies in place that are discouraging this, right, and why? So it is kind of directly called out to municipal leaders to, to ensure that they're in alignment with this policy and practice and that we are developing and have an ecosystem where people can have affordable housing close to jobs. That's the first definition I've ever seen in terms of what they are looking for, kind of putting a number assigned to it. A couple of other bills that we'll discuss. So there's PG one seventeen twenty-five. This is zoning authority for municipalities. Delegate Holmes is carrying that. One of the main things is even though it would not directly affect Blatonsburg at this point because there is a fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand population limit that does apply to that. But we do view this to be a good bill because it's a step in the right direction. So get something done in this session, move toward the next section to continue on with that. That is kind of in neutral at this point. It's not going forward. It's not going back. In listening to the hearing, there was some confusion about the bill. So Delegate Holmes is, you know, working behind the scenes to ensure people have clarity behind what are you trying to propose and what are you trying to do? So that's kind of where that bill is at. So I wouldn't say it's in, it's in the driver's seat quite yet. It's in neutral. As a sponsor of the, of the bill, he needs to kind of get that back on track to make sure his colleagues understand what's, what's going on and what he's trying to do. That would be laurel-ish type of zoning authority, the ability to be able to pass council, county, excuse me, county council zoning laws as it applied to Blatonsburg, you would be able to individually do that on your, on your own. Another bill, I think I spoke about as a community before, and I know this impacts you all, this is PG four eight twenty-five. That's Community Association, a mandatory registration fee. This would be a hundred dollars that the association would have to pay to the county. And if the homeowners association was not upholding its standards or there was an issue, instead of the citizens having to get an attorney to go sue the HOA to make them do what they're supposed to do, they could turn to the county and the county would give them money to be able to make sure the HOA does what it's supposed to do. That proceeds, that seems to have a lot of support behind it. There was a lot of, I think a lot of people have been impacted by HOAs, not necessarily sometimes upholding the things that they're supposed to do. And then people having to work to seek legal action and then, and then things of that nature. So that's kind of moving in the, in the right direction. So in terms of touching on some, some youth, some youth violence things, the Youth Violence Review Response Team, there was a hearing for that on March the sixth that just kind of went, came and went, specifically looking at and targeting youth exposed to gun violence. There's no current funding assigned to that, but it will allow our new county CEO to establish a task force and decide what needs to happen with this issue. How do we get our, our youth more engaged involved and what resources need to be a part of that process? Couple of other bills that are maybe, that are definitely of interest, which is a municipal fines increase. I know this is really hard sometimes with limitations to really get people to move to do the things they want to do. So underneath Senate Bill eight twenty, municipal fines, and if you go back in the time machine, last session this happened for the county, didn't happen for us. But this state-level bill would allow municipalities to increase in fractions from the maximum of a thousand dollars today to five thousand. So that would be a good thing in terms of getting people to move and move in directions you want to do. Also, that appears to be moving in a good direction. Hearing when that was positive, I heard that. House Bill nine ninety-seven, which is local emissions amusement tax, also a bill that seems to have a whole lot of support. Three percent tax on grocery receipts from food and beverage sales at establishments, right? So that's a huge win as well as a local tax. That would help. That is going in the right direction. Two bills that I'd like to talk about and definitely answer any questions if you have on it is House Bill ten forty-three. That's the Maryland Voting Rights Act for two thousand and twenty-five. So there's lots of things in that bill, but there's two things I think that is, is good for us all to talk about today. One of the things is it establishes you have to be a US citizen to participate in municipal elections. You have to be a US citizen to do that. It also establishes a second thing, which is you have to give people at least a thirty-day notice if you're going to make a change to an election. There was particular instances that were cited, where like the week before an election, last minute updates to things were being done and things of that nature. So this basically, there's lots of things in it. It says, you know, it gives legal enforcement, people can sue, sue the city and all the other stuff if it's not followed. But the two big rocks it's pushing at is establishing, you know, you have to be US citizen to vote. And, you know, you have to give people at least a thirty-day notice where you may change this to, to how you're going to proceed forward with your, with your election. Think also another big bill because it's definitely targeted, so it, it could have impact. And I'll kind of give you the highlights, highlights of it. And if you want to talk more about it, honoring my fifteen minutes, I'll definitely dive into it more. It's HB nine ninety. And that is directly targeted municipalities. And it says that when you have people employed in financial oversight roles, such as controllers, treasurers, all the other names, there has to be educational requirements and experience requirements to tie to that. And even there's continuing education and you have to report back on what the person is doing to, to meet those things. There is no grandfathering end date and things of that nature. So maybe this is not an issue. If you have someone on staff who meets these credentials, they have a, I think it's twenty-seven hours of semester work in financial oversight, a bachelor's degree, things of that nature. So if, if they meet the experience and educational requirements and that's currently what you do today, great. If not, this is something that, once it goes into effect, you, you gotta, you gotta either get that person up to speed or you have to find someone that will, that will be able to meet it, those credentials. I want to make sure I honor the time, so I'm going to put a pin in it. And I definitely want to hear any questions from you as I've spoken a lot, so.
Thank you for that overview, Mr. Brown. So first, I'll go to the folks in the room. Are there any questions about the bills that were just provided to us as far as this month's update? I don't see any hands, but I'll start off first. The House Bill nine ninety, the question there was, it does say other financial administrators. And so what about small towns where we have a finance clerk in addition to our treasurer? Our treasurer has, typically in any municipality, that treasurer or comptroller has at least a four-year degree and other training. So that's a given. But I think the concern is if we have, let's say, a town clerk who has responsibility for certain financial matters in support of the comptroller or treasurer, or you have a finance clerk specifically to do more of the admin types of things, are we now saying these people are required to basically have a degree in finances where they're pushing us?
That's the way I read it because it even lists in there that financial officers. I think that's kind of what I would throw that person underneath. But it does say that you have to have a training program for them. So maybe that's where you could, it's a question we could ask, I think it's all about in the devil's little details. But I would say the safe answer I would give would be yes. The progressive answer I would give would be if we had a training plan or program or we had a clear establishment to say, the treasurer maintains all these things. Now, there's a financial officer that works underneath them. This is a training plan we have established for them to, to make sure they're on par. But really, our treasurer meets all these requirements and we're good. I can definitely get clarification on that, but that's the way I would, safe answer than the answer we could see if they'd be willing to work towards.
Okay, because that, I definitely would have a concern there because typically the clerks are more in the supporting role. So we don't require them to have the advanced qualifications of a comptroller or a treasurer. Otherwise, that you have duplication there in roles and responsibilities, I would think. But Mr. Tenelli, curious to get your thoughts on this. Mr. Tenelli, could you?
Can you hear me okay through there, Mayor?
Okay, I can hear you now.
Okay, I support it except for this, it would really hurt the smaller municipalities that don't have like really complex financial transactions, you know, the municipalities that have like a population of like three hundred or less. It, it will affect them and they just don't have the budgets to hire, you know, I mean, they contract, they contract out like the, they may even be exempt from audits for, for being that small. So, I mean, Michelle was just saying, you know, they'd have to contract with like a CPA firm, which would drive their cost up. So, I mean, it's a good idea, but it's not one size fits all.
I definitely agree. Okay, so it sounds like from Mr. Tenelli's point, he's favorable on it just with the exception of for smaller municipalities and having some grace there. So if there's a way that you can just convey that to the bill sponsor, I think that would be helpful. And then, of course, the other one that's concerning is HB fifteen twenty-five. And the fact that this is being pushed in as though it's emergency legislation, basically restricting municipalities from annexing land that might cross into another legislative jurisdiction, which seems silly when you look at how voting, I'm sorry, voting lines are redrawn, you know, after we have the census, they go back, they redo the maps. And so the district that you're in today is not necessarily the district you're going to be in ten years from now. So to use this arbitrary sort of rubric just doesn't make a lot of sense. And I know through PG, PG CMA has been vocal about this too and pushing back. So hopefully between the advocacy there, they can slow this down.
Yeah, and I think, and I don't want to stand here today and say it's not, it's, it's not going to happen and it, it makes its loops. But I think it, because it's an emergency bill, because it has such a long way to go, because you're going to have to have three-fifths majority vote to, to get it. It, it's a, it's a, it's a very long three-point shot to, to hoping for it to go in. Doesn't mean we can't pay attention to it. I know Tony had directly engaged with sponsor, you know, Delegate Harrison on it, by sheer delegate action on it to kind of, you know, give a viewpoint in terms of what, to your point, a lot of the things. And, and, and I, I, you know, I think once again, like a lot of things, unfortunately, we're getting a lot of reactionary bills. A particular person is doing something. So it's like, oh, we must scale this in for everybody. Why don't we focus on what the other person is doing to kind of curtail it? So that was kind of the feedback. I think someone is taking a little bit of advantage of it, but I don't, yeah, to your point, I don't know why we're, we're, we're going across the board. So we, we have been in contact with the sponsor. I'll keep talking with them.
That's good to know that you've reached out. And I think just generally after the legislative session, we got to have a conversation with, even if it's members of the House delegation, about how we're going to work together going forward because they can't have a knee-jerk reaction to municipal matters with throwing up bill land at the state level every time there's conflict. I think we do better having a conversation with them to actually let them hear both sides of the stories and work through it versus them bypassing municipal authority and going to the state legislature to just punish municipalities. So another conversation for another day. But folks in the room or Miss Blind, or Councilmember Blind, any other comments or questions for Mr. Brown? Michelle?
Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Brown. What happens to an existing annexation that's already in progress? Will that be grandfathered into, into it or will they need to comply with the new law?
Yeah, so if it happened before the bill, a bill enacted, and I don't have the date, which most of the time they say October, it tends to be kind of their, their nice date I like to throw out there. So if, if it gets enacted, if it, if the, everything is signed, sealed, delivered before the bill is enacted, then it's fine. But if it's, if it's, if the bill hasn't been enacted yet, that's the key thing, whenever the bill is enacted. I can look up the date and give it to you. I don't have it in front, but I can give you the data which said, which that bill's proposed to be enacted.
Councilmember Dixon, did that answer your question?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, seeing there are no other questions, Mr. Brown, we will let you go. But appreciate your help in keeping us connected and aware of what's happening at the state and county levels. And with that, we wish you a wonderful evening.
Have a good one. Thank you, everyone.
You too. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. The next item on tonight's agenda is Resolution fifteen dash two thousand and twenty-five. And this is regarding the appointment of, oh, sorry, Michelle, were you about to say something?
No, I was waiting for you, Mayor. I was waiting for you, so, yeah.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to the administrator and clerk to take us through this item.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Town Council. We have some of the applicants for the Ethics, for the Ethics Board here. Ms. Watson is going to provide a report and then call the members up. Ms. Watson?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, President. You can hear me? Everybody can? Can you hear me? Okay, okay. Good evening. Again, like the, our town TA said, this evening, we're looking at the Resolution fifteen, the Ethics Commission appointments. Again, Mayor and Council, we, we were, you asked me a few months ago to do some interviews with the new appointees, which we did. I've already included the report for each of the residents that did apply for the Ethics Commission. And tonight, we just have them here so you can meet them formally and ask any questions that you may have. I've already checked. Mr. Brandon Newsom is here, Mr. Michael Wildheart, and Mr. Trey Jackson-Marshall is here. So if you want, we can call them up each. Again, if you look at your report, there is a quick summary of, you know, how many years they've been a resident, you know, why they are interested in being in the Ethics Commission, their experience, their commitment. And again, if you guys have any questions, I can call them one by one or if you want to ask any questions before then.
So, yeah, if, Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind just asking them to take the podium and just give, you know, a brief overview of their experience and why they're interested, that would be helpful. From the February meeting, specifically, the council raised the request to have them come and just introduce themselves to the Town Council so that there could be a level of confidence and understanding of who these individuals were before making a formal appointment.
Her first resident is Mr. Brandon Newsom.
Well, perfect. Glad to be here. My name is Dr. Brandon Newsom. I'm so thankful for the opportunity. I'm happy to answer the questions. So as it relates to the why, I was so thankful to get the chronicle that gets sent out from Blatonsburg that gave great opportunities to be involved. And as I looked at the ones, both the Green Team, the History Team, the Elections Commission, and then also the Ethics Commission, I, I recognized that the Ethics Commission was a thing that I thought resonated most with me and then also resonated most with my background. So with that in mind, I am a child and adolescent psychiatrist, currently working in PG County and Montgomery County in the non-public special education options. And I'm also the medical director of a partial hospitalization program for youth in Montgomery. An integral to those roles is that focus upon high-quality services that focus on professionalism and the utmost standards of ethics. As a physician, you know, professionalism and high, a high degree of ethics is in our training from the get-go. And as a psychiatrist, confidentiality is our bread and butter. And also in both the education and health, being in both the education and healthcare systems, you know, I have learned to work with them. And I think that that would be something that could be helpful, especially as it relates to working with a town system. I have also served in multiple organizations, currently serving as the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, Diversity and Culture Co-Chair. And of course, in that role, a lot of things come up as it relates to equity, inclusion, and ethics, currently serving on the courageous conversations toward racial justice nonprofit group. And of course, in these, this role, I do a lot of trainings and then also some community education. And in those things, we most certainly have to focus in upon, you know, speaking truth, but then also, you know, managing privacy, managing integrity, managing kindness and managing the idea that it's okay for people not to have known. And I think that that's kind of sort of approach that's important. And then also, I was previously a Regional Vice President for the Committee of Interns and Residents, representing a thousand people in the state of Maryland before transitioning here for fellowship. And as part of that, I was also on the General Board for CR SEIU. And currently, they represent thirty-seven thousand people. And in that role, making financial decisions, also having to manage the ethical concerns that might come up. So happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Newsom, for expressing interest in the Ethics Commission. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Councilmember Blood, I think I saw you come off mute.
Yeah. Okay, I was wondering, what, what ward are you in? I'm sorry, my watch moved scratching. What ward, what ward are you?
I believe it was in the first ward. I'm at Kinnaworth.
Yes, so that's Ward one. Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. And next, we'll go back to the live room. Are there any questions? Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Dixon, or Councilmember McBride?
Councilwoman Dixon has a question.
Hi, thank you for coming. Thank you for having the interest to be a part of our town. I have a question. How will you ensure that your decision remain unbiased from all political and personal influences?
Absolutely. I think that that's the beauty of it being, I believe that you all are moving toward a three-member team. I think that, you know, one of the things that will be important is to disclose any thing that I feel like would be a conflict of interest. And in those things that I feel might present as a conflict, making sure not to vote up on those things and make sure that you all are aware of that moving forward. And I think that that would be the most important thing.
Thank you. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon. Any other questions from the council? And I apologize, there was a delay from when I can see you on the screen. All right.
Councilwoman Brown.
Oh, Councilmember Brown?
So in terms of your availability, the time and commitment, are you, are you available to commit to this?
Absolutely. So I love the question. So with my current work schedule, I actually work Monday through Thursdays. And I intentionally did that because I wanted to give myself more flexibility to work in the community. Also, don't work in the after, well, after five and on weekends. So I do believe I would have time.
And then just one question that I had was, I understand you've lived in town for a few years, but have you been involved in any sort of initiatives or activities in the town since you've been a resident?
Yeah, so I will say that that's something that I'm hoping to do more of. I came down in two thousand and twenty in the COVID pandemic and also in the mental health crisis. So of course, my focus at that time was upon that. And that's why, as I mentioned, was positioning myself at this point to be more, be able to be more involved by, you know, limiting, putting some restrictions to limit hours so I can do more community work. by, you know, limiting, putting some restrictions to limit hours, so I can do more community work.
Perfect. Thank you so much for taking the time to be here. We appreciate it. And we'll turn it back over to Madam Clerk to introduce the next resident.
Our next resident is Mr. Michael Wildheart.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Wildheart. I currently am with Harmony Cemetery. I'm sure some of you may be aware of that. I'm also a minister and heavily in the church community. And it's good to see you again, Madam Mayor. I've worked with her on several projects, one of which is where I'm currently residing at Parkway Condo Community, where I am the editor of our community newsletter. So I work well with our administration, our new board, and in trying to create a more stable community and communication platform for them. I also with my ministry that launches hopefully in June. I'm still waiting for my non-tax IDs and everything, but that is a grassroots ministry that will reach out to first, the people in our community. And what we do is, the ministry itself is called Food to the Soul Ministries. We will be trying to create soup stocks to give out to our elderly and people who are in need. I don't think that I need to explain what we're going through right now as far as the socioeconomic climate for the community. So things may be getting rough, and they're going to need some guidance. And more importantly, they're going to need a helping hand. That's where my ministry will come in. So I'm open to any questions that you all may have. Right now, I've been a resident in Bladensburg for almost seven years.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wildheart. So I'll start with the folks in the room for any questions. Councilmember Dixon, I'll start with you.
Thank you again for making the decision to serve. We appreciate that you take the effort to do so. I love the fact that you are already engaged in the community. And also, I love the fact that you're a minister, because I'm also a minister as well, of the gospel. My question will be the same that I asked before. How will you ensure that your decision remain unbiased, both politically and personally?
I was, I was. Okay. If you're going to be able to represent the community, you have to be able to hear all sides. If you shut yourself down to one side or one part of the message, it doesn't get communicated. If personal feelings are in play, I will happily recuse myself and, if necessary, give proxy to a colleague. But I feel that having a large degree of diversity in my makeup below, that I am more than capable of seeing things for what they are, speaking cleanly, and more importantly, hearing what the community has to say about the issues at hand.
Thank you. My next question would be, what if there's a situation arise with one of the staff member here or councilman mayor? How will you handle that? Would you take it to the street, or will you keep it in conference?
Another very good question. I think that with any structure, there is a hierarchy. And so whatever the guidelines are for the committees, that's the guidelines that we should follow. I guess the best thing to say is that when you're dealing with a lot of different egos and everything, sometimes you have to put yourself aside, hear again what they're saying. If something is turned off, that message won't go through, right? So go back to them. Maybe I missed something, you know? Let's sit down, let's talk about it. I want to hear your view, and hopefully, you're willing to hear mine. Taking it outside of, you know, the bubble is not something that you really want to do, you know, unless you are in such a dire situation that it affects the whole community. But when you're talking about something that is uniquely or specifically within-house, taking it outside isn't going to help. It's not going to change, you know? In order to really understand, you have to be willing to hear the other person.
I'm back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Over to you.
Thanks, Mayor. You had the same question in terms of your time to commit.
I have no problem giving my time. As far as, if it's something where there's a schedule conflict, I will let you know well in advance. Otherwise, I will, if I can, I'll take leave or, you know, whatever. But I do take my roles very seriously. And this is something that is not only just an honor, but it's a privilege. So I definitely want to be available as much as possible.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember McBride, anything that you wanted to ask?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. First of all, I would like to say thank you for being in Ward 2. No offense, but we could truly use the help. And hopefully, I get to work with you again on some important projects within Ward 2, along with Councilmember Blunt. Thank you.
I would love the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Blunt, any questions or comments? Okay. And just same questions as last time, just in fairness. If you could just elaborate on your experience in working with the community, just so folks can be aware of that, that would be great.
Yes, surely. One of the things that we worked for with the help of Madam Mayor was a beautification day within our community. We helped plant within the, I believe it was the Kennelworth community. And they were kind enough to give us what they had left over to beautify our grounds and make that better. Right now, I'm working strongly with our association in trying to get our building back to code. And so for my position, it's more or less letting the people in the community, because we're about 60%, maybe 65% renters. So they really don't understand the difference between living in an apartment and living in a condo. And we're trying to get them more involved in community efforts, so that we can meet those goals as a new association. Then one of the other things that I didn't, I wasn't able to help personally, my wife was, was one of the other beautification days where they were able to put in new flowers. I believe you all had sunflowers. So, yeah, so... So that I'm also been working with PG County Code. I have a few people that I know there. And trying to, again, we're trying to get things back to a stable performance on our end since we've taken over as a new association.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Wildheart. We appreciate you stepping up to volunteer and for taking the time to be here with us tonight. And with that, we'll turn it back over to you, Madam Clerk, to introduce the next resident.
Our third applicant, Mr. Darryl Davis, is not yet here or has not here. So I'm going to go into our fourth applicant, Mr. Trey Jackson-Marshall.
Hello, my name is Trey Jackson-Marshall. I've been a resident for 26 years. I'm a second-generation Jackson that lived in Bladensburg. My grandfather was named Daniel Jackson. He did a lot of things for the community, one of them being the Community Rec Center for Bladensburg. He was there for breaking ground on that. I just wanted to try to join something, to get back to the community and try to... I don't have a lot of experience in certain things, but I was trying to see if I can get into something new and try that. If there's any questions you would guys like to ask me, Mayor, or the councilmembers, I'm willing to answer. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Marshall. So I'll start with Councilmember Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I love the fact that you're young and you want to get engaged. Of course, when you're young, you can move, you can skip, you can do all that. My question is, can you explain or share a time when you had to make an ethical decision in your 26 years?
Sure. I've been an assistant manager for about four years now. I've been plenty of times where HR complaints with my manager and other employees that I have. So issues relating to like hours, hours of stealing hours or something like that, or investigating, I have done that. And also with certain things where training wasn't a thing for them, so I would help them out and stuff like that. Like issues like that, maybe was a conflict of interest with them too. And I had to come in and step in for HR and actually be a person to hear both sides of the story and then give a report to HR. I've worked at Chuck E. Cheese as an assistant manager, and now I'm in the Royal Farms as assistant store manager. So it's a lot of responsibilities. Yeah.
Thank you. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown, any questions from you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And it is definitely good to see the young energy as well and that you have the interest and you want to get out in the community and really make yourself, you know, available to the town. So the same question, do you have time to commit to the Ethics Commission?
Yes, ma'am. Pretty much, I'm off on some weekdays, Wednesday and Tuesdays and even some Thursdays. So I'm pretty much free. If I have to make an availability for it, I will. I have no issues with that, or my job wouldn't have any conflict with it either.
Great, thank you. Any questions, Councilmember McBride? Or are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Blunt, any questions from you for Mr. Marshall? Okay, great. And I believe, Madam Clerk, you said those were the three in the room, and Mr. Davis hadn't quite made it yet?
That's correct, Mayor. And the fifth applicant, they've sent everything in a little bit late, so I was not able to interview them like I did everybody else. So I could not make a recommendation now, so I could bring that back to the Council if you want in the next meeting, next council meeting.
Okay, great.
Just to summarize, at the last meeting, I did make a recommendation that, since we have five...
At that time, we had four, but I still think we should do maybe a three-person on the Ethics Commission with possibly an alternate. But again, that's up to the Council. If you guys want to appoint everybody, if you want to do a three with a possible alternate, I still think with the numbers that we have, that's still a better option for the Ethics Commission at this time.
I would agree. Ms. Watson, I think it's in the best interest of the committee to have an odd number, so that there's never a tie when they have to deliberate and make a judgment call. So my recommendation, similar to yours or consistent with yours, is just to go ahead, appoint three people, and then ask one to be considered as an alternate. So if someone has a change in work experience, or they move, or for some reason can't fulfill their duties, we have someone else that we can go to to fill in that role and not have a vacancy that handicaps the ability of the Ethics Committee to do its job. So I think we are in good shape with that conversation as far as hearing from the candidates. We had already discussed this last month, but again, just wanted to hear directly from the candidates before making a formal vote at the council meeting. So if there are no other questions, we can proceed on to the next item. And again, thank the residents for coming out and taking the time to introduce themselves or say hello, in some cases, to the Council and staff this evening.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to also thank each and every one of the residents. We spoke a lot, interviewed, talked, and I got to really get to know everybody. So thank you again for meeting with me for the last three months.
Perfect. All right, next up, and I'm looking at the time, so I see it's 22 minutes after the hour, and we still have quite a bit to push through. The next item is the FY 2026 Budget Overview, so I'll turn it over to Town Administrator Bailey Hedge-Pett.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm going to pull up on my screen a copy of the PowerPoint, so just bear with us for two seconds while I pull that up. Okay, there we go. Sure. I think that you should start to see it in a second. Let's see. Okay, perfect. All right. Now I got to go back to presentation mode. Okay. So this is the presentation mode. Thank you, everyone, for joining us for a brief presentation on the budget for 2026. So this is fiscal year 2026. We're first going to start to talk about some of the structural budget issues that we're facing as a municipality, some really short lists of some possible cost savings, which we'll bring back on March 18th. And then we do have some updated revenue estimates and then the next steps. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the Structural Budget Overview. There are some structural issues that we've inherited in regards to the funding from ARPA, which are the American Reinvestment and Recovery and Rescue Plan, right, Rescue. I always get it. I get it. I'm so stuck in 2010 with ARA. So I want to call it the Reinvestment Act, but yes, it's ARPA, which is... Yeah, so ARPA funding. So ARPA was from COVID. And we used it to offset the budget in FY 23, which seems so long ago, when we used it to, for $526,000, which helped us to, one, give out some raises to employees, helped us to cover our overall general expenses. The town got over $3 million in ARPA, and 1.5 million of that went directly to rental reimbursements, and another $500,000 of that went to business and to businesses and different, just basically, community activities. So when you think about the fact that maybe 1.2 went to help with overall expenses, it was a very small portion of the ARPA budget. But Mr. Ottenelli has given us that information several times, so I won't beat a dead horse. The other issue is some, people have been driving much better than we expected. So we've had some revenue shortfalls in our speed camera, but we're hoping that people will drive worse in FY 26. All right. Anyway, so next one is that expense increases, compensation over has increased since 2021. If we look at the last few years... If we look at the last few years, we've added more employees, we've expanded our services, which are all good things. So it went from 3.3 million to 6.6 million. Every year since 2021, we've experienced at least a 17% increase in our insurance, and this cost has doubled since 2021. I'm gonna show you some graphs that kind of show you this. Again, the plan increases have been minimal, but the other part about is, as we've added those employees, they've added health insurance. So when you look at this chart, it sort of shows you how this has, especially for health insurance, how that cost has doubled and where we are going as far as the payroll costs from now until then. And then this one will show you the health enrollment numbers, how that has also increased. And that's also family independence. And so those costs have a structural impact on your budget. And then again, this whole thing with the increase of insurance costs, you can see from 20 to 25. So there's some other small costs that we would say is that everybody knows that there's pain at the pump. So from 2021, we had, we were paying about $75,000 a year for fuel. Now we're paying close to about $150,000 a year for fuel. Workers' compensation has doubled since 2021. We were paying about $160,000, now we pay about $320,000. That also increased because of the number of employees that we have. And we have more public safety officers, which have a higher cost for workers' comp, and that's what some of those changes are. But overall, everyone's workers' comp has increased. It's not just us, it's just the fact that it is a fact in reality. Staff additions, again, we talked about. And then consultant costs. Our consultant costs have quadrupled since 2021. Back in 2021, we were just paying the town attorney. Now we have grant writers, which have been pretty successful. We've received about $800,000 in grants from the grant writers. Actually, closer, I'm sorry, about 1.5 million. Mr. O'Connor got us a $680,000 grant, and we were able to get a $400,000 grant from some efforts from Monarch Butterfly, or other grant writer in the last year. And then we've also added our economic development consultant. We've also added our... You just saw Mr. Brown from LA Perez as well. So, and then we've also, last month, you approved the HR consultant. So instead of adding staff, we've added consultancy, which is cheaper than adding a full-time employee that has health insurance. So there you go. So you have a consultant versus an employee with health insurance. So those are those costs that have changed. So how are we gonna deal with this? Because right now, and we'll get into the big numbers when we're going through next week's budget, this has increased our budget from year to year about a million to a million and a half dollars that we have to kind of figure out. Would that be about accurate?
That's on the high end, but yeah, it's, but it's been cumulative over the last few years now. It's just starting to really, really hit ahead now, so it's...
So, as I tag team back with Mr. Tinelli on this, there's a residential and commercial taxes. They increase about 4% at about $418 million assessed valuation. At 74 cents for the current tax, that's about $3.1 million in revenue. We estimate that this increased about $120,000 just from straight constant yield. That's where you are. With apartments, that increased slightly from last year by another 4%, which means they have a $206 million overall at 80 cents, which is where they currently are for the apartment units. It's a $65,000 increase compared to FY 25. So those are small current revenue estimates. We do see a slight increase in highway user funds, about 5%, but that may go away because the state may be looking for change in their budget, and they have in the past taken highway users from us. So that is a thing, but we are leaving it in our estimates because we're hopeful that they will not do that. And then we slightly reduced the traffic, the automated traffic from this year, so that's what we're looking at. And then what we're looking at is, and we'll go through these in more detail, is a freeze on vacant positions until December of 2026, excluding essential positions. Limited to no coal increases and merit increases for employees next year. Possible changes in work schedules for administrative staff to help to reduce the overall amount. Overall reductions in discretionary funding, and no capital purchases until the mid-year of December 26th of 2026, so that we can look until the situation improves. I'm not bullish on the economy right now. I don't know a lot of people that may be, but I think that there may be some issues that we could see. And this is a very conservative approach that I'd like to have you to start to look at. But I wanted to put these things out early so that everybody understands that this could be a more difficult year. And also, we're setting ourselves up from the standpoint of '27 because as we look at projects like the town hall and other things that you want to do, you'll need to put yourself in a very strong financial position for '26, going into '27 if you do want to get debt service to ever build a town hall. So in some ways, this year has to be conservative because it sets you up for the things that you want to do in the future. And so I'm making these possible cost-saving recommendations now, just to kind of keep this all transparent from the standpoint of making sure that the council has some difficult decisions. Not horrible, but difficult in this year. And there, but I just want to kind of, I'm gonna be probably a little bit less... Probably a little bit less sunshine than maybe some of our neighbors. There are other municipalities that are issuing COLAs because they have contracts with their unions. The city of Greenbelt, the city of Hyattsville, and the city of College Park are all doing increases because they have, they do have contracts that they negotiated pretty much right before all this stuff kind of has happened. So they are negotiating for COLAs in this new year. COLAs cost the town about $420,000 if we would add them as an option. But right now, we do have a deficit hole from the ARPA that we need to fill. So the reason why they're not, we're not recommending COLAs at this point, or a limited COLA at this point, is because that is something that you'll need to look at in regards to expenditures. But that's the, that's my quick overview. And the next steps are that March through May, we'll have all these sessions on the 18th, next Tuesday. You get to sit with me again, and we'll have a much more detailed analysis with Mr. Tinelli, where we'll be showing you a lot less brighter stuff and probably some more Excel sheets so that you can kind of dig into those numbers and you can see where we are. The first budget ordinance, again, is in April. And we have a couple more sessions where we're gonna go through with staff, and you'll get to see line by line all the different budgets. But this is just a preview, and I know it's not the best news, but it's the news. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Administrator. And I know we have more time dedicated to going through some of these recommendations at the March 18th meeting, so if... I'm waiting for the screen to switch back over to the folks in the room, but if there's anyone who has a hand up with a question, please go for it. Otherwise, we'll move on and again, have more time to dig into the numbers. But we understand and knew this was gonna be a tough year. And I will say that even from the other municipal leaders that were at the Maryland Mayors Association Conference, the main thing we were talking about is the budget and the concerns, you know, over how to balance it and cuts that we're all having to make with the upcoming fiscal year. So this is not exclusive just to our town. It's really across the board that all Maryland municipalities are having to go through this. And then just hearing from Governor Moore, what was that, Wednesday night? He's very much committed to maintaining HURs, and that is not on the chopping block. But as you know, he has to put forth the budget, and then it's really up to the legislators to approve or modify that. So I think it is smart to just be conservative across the board. But Town Administrator, are there any hands in the room?
Yeah, Councilwoman Dixon has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know we're pressed for time. Michelle, you mentioned that there will be a slight increase of 5% in highway user funds, and you mentioned that it might go away. Is it that because... Is it because of the standpoint that we're not following the state compliance requirements?
No, it has nothing like that. No, it's really what basically the mayor was saying, is that in the past, this has been something that was targeted. When the state needed money, they pulled back our highway user. It has nothing to do with our compliance or anything like that. That's just, it's just the fact that they tend to take it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
No problem. And again, we can dive more into it when we're not rushed next week at the meeting, so please bring even more questions, because we do need to just consider everything at this point. So that concludes the FY 2026 Budget Overview. Now to another bleak update on the Pepco lighting situation. I'll turn it back over to you, Town Administrator. You just keep bringing all the good news.
I got all the hits today. Okay. So Pepco, I provided a brief report on our situation with Pepco. There are two issues that are going on. Number one, we are being billed... At first, they told us we were going to get a $25,000 rebate because we were going to get back money for lighting that is not on town right-ofways. So that would say, including, let's say, Annapolis Road and on Kennelworth and things like that that are on state right-ofways. Well, when that was brought to the state, they decided they wanted to push back on it and say, "Look, we don't have agreements with any of the towns, so the towns need to continue to pay since they've always been paying for these right-ofways." That's hit all of the municipalities. Let's call this all out of left field because we didn't know what we were paying until they did the analysis, because that was a state-mandated analysis. And so Pepco had issued us these refunds. We are now being rebuilt for the lights. And plus, we are being billed at the new Pepco increased tariff on these lights. So we can estimate that we will have approximately a $25,000 increase to our bills because of the tariff, the new cost for Pepco lighting next year, and the fact that now we have all of these bills. I mean, all of these lights that we were being billed at a lower rate before. We are going to follow up with the other municipalities. There is actually, I'm working with Sue Ellen because she is pretty much doing some kind of illegal action against Pepco in regards to this billing and trying to find out who, if the state has, if the state is going to do agreements with some of the municipalities, especially for major roads like Annapolis Road and Kennelworth. So right now, that's the news I need to bring to you because it's the latest on that. The second part of the update is the part, that we are in the process of trying to buy these lighting poles because they are outdated equipment. But if we buy them now, we can control the destiny of how they're replaced and the upgrades versus the system that Pepco has, which is a little bit more exorbitant to towns to purchase. So I will give you more updates as that comes, but I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you, Michelle. It's just frustrating how we went from the first phase of this and then now with SJA pushing back and saying, "Nope, the municipalities have to pay everything." And looking at the pricing though, for what the new street light bill would be, $5,100, if you divided that between all the lights that they're now saying we're responsible for, which is a total of 351, it means the town would be paying about $14.50 per light per month, which may not seem like a lot, but it adds up on top of everything else. So I'm glad that Ms. Ferguson is looking at litigation as a possible way to push back against this because they have to do something to meet us in the middle. It is not our responsibility that they haven't kept the infrastructure updated over the years when it was their responsibility. And so now it's like they want to hand it over at a point where, yeah, we get a say, but we're also financially on the hook for getting these things, the poles replaced, the lights replaced, and so forth, which is not at all fair. It's different if you're handing over something that's in perfect shape, you know, with the most energy-efficient light bulbs. But we'd be taking it over essentially to just incur more cost on updating it and then maintaining it, which is incredibly frustrating. But are there any hands in the room? Because I can only see you and Councilmember Blunt.
Councilmember Brown.
Again, just real quick, if the town, if we have to cost-savings, if we own the lights...
Yeah, your mic's not on.
Sorry. The fee for the, there's a, it's called a, well, it's called a kayak fee, but the fee for us not owning the, I mean, for us to rent it through Pepco means that we perpetually rent it, plus we perpetually pay them for the light fixture. What we asked for, which is what I asked for in my last meeting, was what that actual cost is. They have not given us what that cost is. Actually, they've only given us an estimate. So I asked them so that we could compare the cost of purchase versus the cost of the kayak fee. So you will get both when we bring that to you, because that was what I've asked from Pepco. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the question. Seeing no other hands, I'll keep moving along. The next item is the FY 2025 Community Grant Process Update. I'll turn it over to you, Town Administrator.
So Mayor, we're proud to bring out the new FY 2025 Grant Process for community groups. I wanted to make sure if the council had any comments on the application. I changed it slightly to make it a little bit less complicated than the last one. It's still a lot of information, but it's in your packets, and I can actually take some comments. You can email me comments, but we would like to put this out so that we can give community groups a chance to apply for it for '25.
Great, thank you for making the updates. Just one minor adjustment on pages 61 through, I think it's 67? No, sorry, through 64. The reference, no, through 65, the reference is still to FY 2024, so it just needs to be updated for the new fiscal year on that. And then also, on the first page of the Application and Guidelines in Section C, number 2, it also refers to July 15, 2024, which...
Mayor, we attached both. We attached the 24 and the 25 so you could... So when you look at pages 86 through, those are the 25, that's the revised one. So we've included the 24 and 25 applications, so you could take a look at both. But the 25 is right after it, and on the bottom of the 25, that information is noted. I just wanted to make sure, because it's, that's why it looks like a duplicate.
Yeah, no, I don't have those pages. I'm sorry.
Yeah, from pages 83 on.
Councilmember Blunt was saying she doesn't have it either. I think maybe we just missed... Some of the pages maybe got mixed in the copying, but no worries at all. And then the only other comment I had was, is it possible to move up the approval process so that we can approve it by the June meeting? So at least it's closed out before June 30th, and then the people are notified, and then we can invite them to the July meeting if, you know, we want to do the check presentations at that first month of the new fiscal year?
Yeah, I mean...
That mic keeps going out, sorry.
Sorry, the due date is Wednesday, April 30th, so that should give us plenty of time to bring it to the May meeting or the June. We have enough time to bring it to the May so that you could see it before June, and then you could make the appointment. So that, we're trying to close it out earlier this year, so we should be able to make that timeline.
Okay. Any concerns from the council with that timeline? Okay. Councilmember Brown, were you gonna say something?
Let me just, I guess, I don't know if we need to move the timeline or just reconsider that timeline or not. So, we'll get that.
So do you think it should be due in end of May versus April?
Because we're in March now. Maybe that can be considered.
Okay. I mean, we can move it to like May 15th, and that way it can be ready for... I mean, it's just that we could take, we can, we've accepted them after the deadline, so we can bring you the first ones that come in, because we do have people that send them in pretty early, so we could bring some to you in May, and then we can continue to take them afterwards.
Okay.
Until the money's gone.
Yeah, I guess, in looking at the application, it didn't seem like there was that many pages to complete, and most of the backup documentation most nonprofits have, so I didn't see... So I didn't see an issue with the April deadline. But if, you know, if that's what the majority feels, I'm happy to go along with that.
So I guess at the regular meeting, if you guys want to give me, I mean, I can make the, I mean, this is, this one, you could just send it, you could send me an email to, because it's, since it's been administrative process, you can send me an email if you, you want us to be able to take them a little longer, we can.
Okay, and I just need the other pages.
Yeah, I'll make sure that you guys get a, I think somebody thought that they were duplicates of pages in the, in the posting, pages 81 to 94 are the 25.
Yeah, those are the ones I need. Okay, thanks.
Mm hmm.
And as you wish, Will. And then, oh, sorry. And Town Administrator, still sticking with you on the town scholarship update?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So the town scholarship is the, and I like to thank Ray for this. Um, he did the soaring eagle because, you know, we do everything because we're the Eagles. Um, not the Eagles, but anyways, the eagle is our mascot. Um, it is a $1,000 scholarship for five qualifying students. Uh, we did it with that, you must be a resident of Blainsburg. You must have a minimum GPA of 2.5. You must be enrolled in a post-secondary education or vocational college for the next year or plan to be enrolled in, and then completing the required documents. This is both online and in paper. And there is a beautiful um flyer that Ray did that is um included in your packets and I, that shows that that you can scan and use for a QR code. I, the council just wanted an update on it, that we are moving forward. This is the town scholarship that's already been budgeted. If there's anything that you see that you don't like, let us know.
Sounds good, thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Town Administrator, I can't see them. Is anyone?
Nobody has anything, no, no, nothing on here. All right.
Okay. Next up is the Bostwick House update.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is the um activation event that is scheduled for May 5th. We just wanted to provide an update. Ms. Um, Ms. Watson is here, and I, I'm going to yield the floor to her.
Mayor, Council, I'm going to be quick. So we have our Discover Bostwick event scheduled for May 3rd from 12 to 3 PM. This event is going to be a partnership between the town, MNCPPC, sorry, I was getting that. And then the University of Maryland. You know, it's going to be a historical, cultural, significant um event, basically letting the residents discover Bostwick property, the, you know, our beautiful building that men, you know, that many of our residents don't know about. It gives them a chance to to walk the grounds, and there'll be activities for the children, like arts on the road, uh Get Fit Mobile, a Sankofa um truck will be there. We have partners like the library, Anacostia Water Trust, um Eco City um will be there. So it's just a fun couple of hours of just discovering Bostwick House and learning about the different um, the grounds there. We're going to have food trucks there, a taco and ice cream truck. Um, we'll have different, um, again, like I said, activities for the kids, music. So it'll just be a fun day at um the Bostwick House.
Thank you, Ms. Watson, for the update. And then I just wanted to note on the summary report page in the packets, it has May 5th um at the first reference versus the third, but it is indeed Saturday, May 3rd. I just looked on the calendar, and the third is the Saturday. So um, we're looking forward to that and appreciate all your hard work in pulling this together. So important for showing Bostwick is currently being used as a place and um a location where there's town activities. And so this is going to go a long way in helping us to establish that and hopefully secure more funding for that site. So thank you. Are there any comments or questions from?
There's none in the house for you.
Okay, none in the house, all right, keep going. Next up are one of our um not so favorable topics. It's mosquito spraying time. Is that Mr. Reinhardt?
It is Mr. Reinhardt. I'm, I'm like Vanna and been pointing all the way down to Mr. Reinhardt at the end.
Okay, it'll be a weekly spraying that the Department of Agriculture will come out. Um, we'll have a designated day. Once we have that, we'll let the residents know of that date. Um, since it does have a a small monetary cost, we just want to bring it to the mayor council for their approval.
You actually have budgeted for this already as part of the budget. So this is information only, so you do not have to take a formal action because it's already a budgeted item.
Great, thank you, and thanks for the update, Officer Reinhardt. We know this is important, and we do also understand people can opt out. But really, with West Nile virus and other diseases in a vulnerable population in our community, I appreciate you just continuing year after year to make sure we stay connected with the state to get this uh mosquito spraying done, to protect our residents.
Yes, ma'am.
All righty.
We do have a comment, Councilwoman Brown.
Yeah, and I do like the highlight, uh thanks, Mayor, the highlight, that this will not be conducted. If it is raining, wind speed, when winds exceed 10 miles per hour or if temperatures are above 90 degrees, so, I think that was a good highlight, thank you.
Agreed, thank you, Councilmember Brown, for pointing that out. That is very important. Are there any other comments or questions in the room? No? Okay.
Just that the senior residents are already asking, when are you spraying?
Hopefully, we can have a date soon, right, Officer Reinhardt?
That is correct. Once we submit the application, they will provide us with our first date, and we'll, we'll go from there, and we'll make sure we send out some type of notification.
Thank you. All right, and uh the next item on the agenda is a town hall update. So I'll turn it back over to Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so the last item is the existing condition study that has been done by the Neighborhood Design Center. Um, in the council packet, there is a small PowerPoint which I can go through later on, but it's also for you to look at. It, it begins to give the council some um existing, some initial recommendations on the existing building. The current building cannot be reused to build up on or do things like that. That's one of the findings from this. Um, the police annex could be reconfigured to mitigate some of the um rebuilding of a larger facility expenses. There are two possible sites that are being reviewed. One, the existing town hall site, and another one at Bostwick, which was recommended by the TAP, um, the TAP admin, uh, the TAP program, which is the Technical Assistance Panel that was here last um April to look at that as a possible site. But from the information that was provided, they show the building requirements after looking at our, our um feasibility, our initial, our initial um wants and ask list, that we need about a 28,000 square foot building to accommodate the staffing and the, all the functions that we'd like to see in a town hall. So when you look at that now, and I maybe will just scroll to that very quickly. It is, it shows, and I'll have to, let me shoot, and I'm going to share it one second um so that we can. Yep, I'm gonna, I swear I'll be done in two seconds. Here we go. Share. So this is the existing town hall site, which I, it'll be on the screen in a second. Um, and it shows where, it shows us um here at the corner of Tilden and Edmundston Road. And it kind of shows the site itself. It gives us some little bits about the sunlight, but what I wanted to show you is that, and also shows the Bostwick House site, but what I needed to show you are the boxes themselves after the program analysis, which is here. It's this one here. So that on the existing town hall site, if we just did a one-story, which we're not going to do because it takes up the majority of the, for the space up here, it shows this as taking up a large majority of the, of the site. If you move it to a two-story building, you see that it takes up less of the site. Okay? And that it, that for parking and things like that, those will be things that will be considered as they move forward in the next phases, but this is the initial phase. On the Bostwick House site, as a 28,000 square foot, it takes up 99% of the, 95% of the site. As a two-story, it takes up still like about 70% of the site. So from just the feasibility, the second site, just because of the size of the building, may not be the best site, and they're also concerned about the slope and incline on that piece of property. So those are the highlights, but I thought that those are things that we should bring up. I can answer more questions in the regular session, but I just wanted to make sure the council had it. And then this is attached and on our website. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much. Uh, appreciate the overview and the presentation as well from Neighborhood Design Center. And definitely, I look forward to talking more about it and getting in the room with the council and the um staff to hear um more and also to brainstorm even further about the possibilities. Uh, are there any comments or questions from the council? Okay, none from Councilmember Blunt, none in the room. Okay, so that takes us through the end of tonight's agenda. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember McBride, was that?
Dixon.
Okay, is there a second?
Dixon.
Seconded, any comments or questions before we adjourn? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
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 Aye. Any names? The ayes have it. Thank you all so much. We're adjourned from the work session. And before um I drop, I do have to get back to work. Obviously, I'm out of town, so Councilmember Brown has agreed to um preside over the 7 PM meeting. So with that, thank you all and have a wonderful evening. Good night.
Thanks, Mayor Travel.